We'll officially call the May 27 Town Board meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Right on the dot, we'll let the ministry reflect that the entire board is here, as well as a number of our staff and some distinguished guests that we'll be getting to in a moment. We have the May 13, 2015, minutes before us, and would entertain a motion for those May 13 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Moved, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, then the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that. From a monthly report standpoint, everything is in, so the next wave will be the May monthly reports, and we'll report that out at our next work session on the 10th. And everything should be in for May by the 10th of June. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have two separate guests. The first is Hazel Stewart for the Kilt Shop. And Jim, if you would tee that up for the board.
I am proud to introduce Hazel and Norm Stewart. Hazel moved in probably in the fall, I think.
August last year.
August last year, okay. So, and Linda was good enough to go by and note that you were there, and it's taken me a while to get you to meet with you and talk to you. I wanted to get you into the Town Board and explain your business, and tell them a little bit about yourself so that we can process a permit for you to operate on the site. And I know that you did not know that you needed a permit.
I didn't apologize for that.
Your manager did not tell you that. So with that, I'm going to let you speak to the board about your business and all what it entails.
And you have gone back to the property owner to let the property owner know?
I have not yet. I've been to the property owner's business, but I have not had a chance to talk to her yet about it, but we will talk about it.
I would, I would. And I suspect you have. I would. And I would remind her that the supervisor said that this is not her first endeavor into businesses in the town, and that she should know better.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, noted.
With that, welcome.
Hello, I'm Hazel Stewart. This is my husband, Norm Clark, and I am the owner of kiltshop.com LLC. And we are, well, an headline of our business is keeping the tradition. I am a custom kilt maker. We sell Scottish kilts, Scottish attire and accessories. So I custom make hand-sew, hand-stitch kilts specifically for any given person. I order all of my tartans from overseas, and I work with five different woolen mills in Scotland. So it's the real thing. And my mom was a kilt maker for 60 years, and growing up, I never wanted to be a kilt maker because you never want to do what your parents are doing. And then sometime in there, I turned 50 and thought, I better learn how to make one and kind of keep the tradition. And before I knew it, I was in business and just in love with making kilts. It is a business that is busier than you would ever expect it to be. You know, you see the pipe bands march in the parades, you see Outlander, you know, but there's many, many people that want to carry that tradition through their generations. So I will alter great-grandfather's kilts to make anyone fit, and we also do rentals. So if you're having a wedding and you want to celebrate your Scottish or Irish heritage, we can outfit the entire wedding party. So that's what we do down there on Penfield Road. It's just a little shop, but we cater to many different people, and it's usually by appointment only. I'm there primarily in the evenings after 5:30. I have a day job that I keep just now. Hopefully, that will evolve. And I'm generally there most of the day on Friday, Saturday and Sunday by appointment. So.
It's just you?
It's just me. My husband is my sole supporter and encourages me at every turn, and he has.
But I don't sew.
He doesn't sew, but he.
No shame in that.
His mom.
He carries the wool.
He's in charge of.
He's the mannequin?
No, you have to come see Charlie. Charlie is our mannequin. Norm's in charge of pressing and fringing things, so he has a lively role there. But we vend at.
She seems to be busy.
We vend at various festivals in the area, and, you know, Norm is there, and he's in his kilt, and we have a couple of helpers that help us. We can look up anyone's family heritage and look up a name and find out a tartan that matches it, or, you know, there's over 6,000 registered tartans, and they're making more every day. So we can pretty much make almost anyone Scottish.
You have the right last name, Bart.
Stewart, yes.
She is from Scotland.
I was born in Scotland. Born in Scotland, came over when I was eight years old.
So Jim, are we looking to use our streamlining policy?
Yes, yes, we are.
Any other questions I can answer?
What is the square footage that you have, Hazel?
I think it's 700.
If that.
If that. It's maybe 600, 700.
Yeah, it's a pretty small area.
It's just, yeah.
And you usually see only one person at a time, so as far as parking, maybe your space and somebody else.
Yeah. You know, we, if we have a party, like a wedding party coming in, there may be several cars, but it's usually after hours or in the weekend.
Yeah.
And signage is just what is there today?
Yeah.
We will need to get permits for your sign.
Okay.
So we'll work with you to take care of that.
Thank you.
The sign is pretty small.
Yeah, it was, we just redid one that was already existing there, so we didn't change any of the dimensions or anything.
Do you feel like you have any need for a larger sign when you have those appointments?
No, no.
I mean, it stands out.
It stands out, and, you know, we tell people where we are. We're in the brick building just east of Four Corners.
Look for the Hunting Horn.
The Hunting Horn has a bigger sign than we do.
Right.
So, and that they have to go around the back and park anyway, so, you know, they'll find us. And nobody's really gotten lost yet, so it's pretty good.
It's a pretty visible location.
It is. It's a lovely location. We're really pleased to be there.
If you need a kilt, we'll do whatever it takes to get one.
Well, I would also encourage you to walk down to Encagito.
Yes.
Have you been in there yet? And talk with Randy, the owner there. There might be some sort of synergy between the two of you. Because he does tuxedo rentals and that type of thing, so.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great to make him aware of that for, you know.
I would do that.
That connection.
It's probably a busy season for him as well right now.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's an aspect of consignment to his shop, too, where, you know, you have, might be.
Yeah, people are always asking where, you know, because I don't rent the shirts. Like, where am I going to go get a shirt?
No, there you go.
Yeah, I'd encourage you to walk down there.
It's being advertised.
It's a good idea.
Okay. So, board comfortable with where we are with this?
Yep.
Very much. Glad to finally have you come in.
You'll follow up, Jim, with the letter that Doc made, and the fact that the board did review this, talk about the signage and the permit for the signage.
Yep.
I'm assuming that the fire marshal probably has not been through that area?
I don't believe he has.
So it'd be good to make sure the fire marshal goes through that area, just to make sure that there is no problems or issues associated with that. And of course, you will follow up with the property owner about future uses in her facility.
And I'm sure you'll talk to her when you get a chance.
I will. Yeah, I actually will be seeing her this week at some point.
You will have to pay for a permit, and I'll work with you on that as well, so.
What is the cost of the permit?
$100.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me do work on that.
And that's so we can get people to look at it, to make sure it's safe for you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, board?
Sounds great, like a great addition.
Okay. Welcome on your first anniversary.
I'll leave some cards here.
Oh, very good. That'll be great. Thank you very much.
You're first in line.
Good morning.
Thank you. The cost is a little longer than usual, the kilt for him.
Well, I'm Irish, and Irish people really didn't wear kilts.
No, but we do all the Irish tartans, so.
I know. I think they got jealous of you and wanted to follow suit.
They did, because, you know, all the handsome men in Scotland did want it to be.
That's right.
That's exciting.
Good luck.
I have to remember on TV. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great evening. Thank you for coming in.
Good.
Okay, we'll move on to our second guest, Vito Vitelli, and the St. Joe's Church 5K Run. Mr. Cassello, we'll give you an opportunity to tee this one up as well.
Thank you. We have Jim and Vito here tonight, and I've been meeting with them now for months. And the initial reaction was that we really didn't want to have this race where it's being proposed, but they went back and did some things to try and accommodate us. My big concern was not to close off any roads. I know there have been neighbor concerns over the last years, two years, and the intent was not to close off roads. I think they've tried to accommodate me to do that. You and I are thinking the same way.
All right, I have marked up my.
It's the one I did for you?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got them here too.
You've got, oh, you've got that, okay.
Yeah, I've got them.
All right, we're all set. Same one minute. And here's the 5K flyers. You pass that along, what we're doing.
Thank you. So in our last discussion, they had done some work. They were going to.
Hey, Jim, can I interrupt you just for a second? So this is already being publicly advertised, and we haven't approved it yet? Is that my understanding?
Well, we have been going through this for months. I tried to, I wanted to get them in on the 13th, but we had a problem getting in on the 13th, so they're here on the 27th. And I'm going to let you talk a little bit about what you're trying to do to mitigate neighbor concerns. And we actually have already received one email from a young lady in the neighborhood who's concerned about it, and I will share that with you, and we'll have to deal with that as well.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Tell me about it?
Yeah.
First of all, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for giving us the opportunity to speak before the board today. This is our third 5K run, and all the monies we receive from this 5K run is used for St. Joseph's School, Feed the Hungry, Shelter the Homeless, and Special Olympics. 100% of the profits are derived, used for those purposes. And of course, the Knights of Columbus are not paid, and we get no commissions. We anticipate not closing off any roads. None, zero. Very quickly now, as you look at the map, we will leave the St. Joseph's campus, and we will proceed to the left on Gebhardt Road to Five Mile Line Road, and march on Five Mile Line Road to the light. Now, we have one nice thing we just accomplished, and you can pass this along, is a permission from the deputy, we only have a deputy, from 9:15 to 10 o'clock at that light, to stop traffic as the runners cross Five Mile Line Road and enter High School Drive and proceed around the track, which we have permission to use, and back to Five Mile Line Road, left on Five Mile Line Road, right on Gebhardt, proceed all the way down Gebhardt Road to the Cabell School, left around Cabell's School itself to the end of the drive, of Cabell's Drive, and then back to the original starting position, which is the church campus. We have, we will station two marshals. One marshal would be at Highland Drive, and one would be on Wedgewood Drive, so that in the event the runners are proceeding down in that area and a car will want to enter the Gebhardt, we will stop them just for a few seconds. We will also have two marshals at the light to help the deputy. We also will station marshals periodically throughout the whole route, so, and we have cones designating where the runners will proceed. And I want to emphasize that at no time will we stop, you know, really prevent anybody from using the streets. There will be no street closures. We anticipate the runners will use the sides of the streets, and the center of the streets will be open for traffic. In anticipation of any negative feedback from the residents, this weekend, we will distribute these letters to all the residents of both Gebhardt and Cabell's Drive and Highland Drive and Wedgewood Drive, informing them of the race and our intent of not closing any of the roads.
And Parkwood Drive as well?
Uh, no, we're not going, just Highland and Wedgewood.
Well, you've got to let people know that.
Many more streets.
Yeah, you've got to let the people on Wedgewood and Parkwood know because they're the ones calling it.
Highland.
Five Mile Line.
Five Mile Line, High School Drive.
High School Drive.
Shelly.
All right.
Okay.
And then on the opposite side, Devonshire, Corwin, are they running on that one? So when you say that.
No, we're not running on those streets.
When you say that the runners, well, they back up to Five Mile Line Road though, correct?
All we're running, we're running just on Cabell's and Gebhardt is all we're running. We're not running on those.
How do you get to the high school?
Pardon me?
How do you get to the high school?
Okay, we're going to cross, we're going to cross Five Mile Line Road to High School Drive and just run, you know, next to the school, all the way back to the track and back again. We're not going on any other streets at all.
But the purpose behind notifying these adjacent streets is they utilize the streets you will be on. It doesn't, you don't, you're required not to notify just who you're running past.
Correct.
But anyone who might be affected. And we're very, we're serious about that because particularly this race in general, in particular, has had problems in the past with residents who have had garage sales planned, have had family events planned. I'm concerned about the short period of time of notice if people have things planned already.
We anticipate the race will only last 45 minutes to an hour tops. It'll be, we'll start at 9:30. By 10:15 to 10:30, it will be finished, because we're only anticipating perhaps 125 to 150 runners. That's about what we had the last couple of years. So it's not going to be an all-morning event, or it won't even go into the afternoon. So by 10:30, quarter to 11, maybe one or two stragglers, that's it, we're done. We have to be out of the church parking lot by 12 o'clock anyway, because there's weddings going on at St. Joseph's Church. We have to be out of there. So this is a very short race. It's not going to be the race that you see running.
I'm just saying, it's the same, it's the same length of race we've had in the past, and we have had several resident concerns. We have to be mindful of that.
Oh.
And it's really to be proactive, and you're, I think you benefit from the past.
I.
To be able for us to say to you that we've had some concerns, and there will be residents who get this and say, you know, here they go again. And I think it's important to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Well, the last time, I think, they closed a couple of the streets, and we're not going to do that this year. We're not going to close any streets, zero.
Is there, what is the contact number for some, if I'm a resident and I get this, is there a phone number on here I can call if I have questions?
You can call me, because I'm the Grand Knight of the Council.
Is that on here?
No, I didn't put it on there.
Okay, like a cell phone number for someone the day out?
I can put it on there. I can put it on there.
I think I would encourage that.
I wouldn't encourage, I would make it mandatory, because somebody could get this letter, and they're like, I need to talk to somebody, and this doesn't, St. Joseph's Council, Knights of Columbus, to some people, that means nothing.
Yeah, so your name and a phone number.
Can I offer a suggestion, please?
Sure.
On this letter that's going out, I can staple my card right on the top here. It's got my name and my telephone number on there.
Great, yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Okay.
Because I think that was one of the concerns in the past is, you know, other than 911 and the sheriffs, who do we call if there's, if we've got something?
Absolutely. I will staple my card to all this literature, and if anybody has any concerns, they can call me immediately.
Great, I think it's a good idea.
Is that okay?
Yep.
And Vito, you will be at the site the whole time during the race.
Absolutely.
You'll be there from, well, it starts at 9:30, so I'm guessing you're going to be there from.
I'm there at 6 o'clock in the morning to set up the, you know, set up the event. As the Grand Knight of the Council, the way the Knights of Columbus work, the Grand Knight of the Council, which I am, I'm totally responsible for everything that goes on in the Council. It's my job to, you know, administer to any problems or any questions that may arise. That's my, that's a grand, nice job. It's our job.
Have you been in touch with the school district at all?
Yes, and I have permits.
Do they have activities going on at either of the schools?
Not to my knowledge. I have permits to use the school grounds, you pass that along, both with Cabell's and the High School. I have permits. And we have, you know, signed emails from the Sheriff's Department to man that light. So we did all that.
So Jim, so, okay, so these are all?
Permits to use the track, and also permits to use Cabell's.
Just wanted to make sure they're all the same.
Right, we did all that. No, I've been certifying.
Okay.
So actually, rightly so, what you're concerned about is advising the residents in all the surrounding districts, streets. Would you run those streets by me one more time, please, so I make sure that I.
I defer to you, Tom Cass, so that you can.
I'm marking out, yeah, I'm marking out a route of streets that need to be addressed in addition to all the frontages of the streets that you're going to be running on.
All right.
And I can sit down with you, but right now, it's Parkwood, Wedgewood, all of Cabell's, all of Gebhardt, portions of Five Mile Line Road, up to the.
The residence of St. High School Drive.
Yep, and the residence of High School Drive on both sides.
The residence of High School Drive?
Yeah.
Was only a few of them there, is that real?
There is fencing along the backside on the south side, so that's not an issue, but there are residents along.
Would you give that list to me after we?
I certainly will.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think that's, that's great, if you can have your name and a contact on there.
Absolutely. No, we certainly are cognizant of the fact that not to cause any problems with the residents, because you want to be good neighbors.
Yep.
And we are the Knights of Columbus. The last thing we want to do is have any ill feelings in the community. It's the last thing we want to do. So, I mean, our reputation, not only with the community, but with the Lord, is very important. We want to do anything to cause any problems. You can have my word on that.
Is it the same weekend as the last two?
It is.
Okay.
It's the 6th of June. Funny you brought that up, I was thinking that, because I was looking at all the dates yesterday.
So it's about the first weekend, first Saturday in June, then?
Right. The only reason we picked that weekend is because there were other activities going on with the school, using the track. We couldn't use the track. The track was available that weekend, and that's why we selected that weekend.
And you and I have talked about the idea of this, you know, strongly urging you not to pursue this particular route in future.
Yes, absolutely.
Other locations in the town are more advantageous for everybody.
Yeah, we'll go with that area that you were suggesting at our last couple meetings.
We actually have had that happen. It's turned out, I think, better for the groups doing the run.
Yes.
You know, it's kind of, you learn from experience.
Right.
And we had a, remember the 5K run out of the Penfield Racket Club that came in with a certain route and including proposing closing Panorama Trail. And we were able to work together and find a different, actually more scenic, more safe route.
Yes.
And it turned out better for everybody, anyway.
All right, thank you for the suggestion. Thank you so much.
Now, Kaz, we did, we did receive that letter.
We did.
I think you're referring to the one that came in from Andrea Moore.
Yep.
And she was forwarding a message from Patty Horton, who identified the race via the church bulletin, so I'm assuming she's a parishioner of St. Joe's. And then she cascaded it, that email, out to the neighbors in that area. And if Vito and Jim do not have that, you know, I think giving them that, I think, is good, because it just lists, you know, what the, you know, what the concerns are around, around the race itself. And it might be, it might be worth, it might be worth, you know, a, an extra discussion with Andrea and for Patty, Patty Horton. So I'd be more than happy to.
That would be good.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be good, because they're the two that certainly seem to have the most interest by way of safety, number one. Number two, some events, as Councilwoman Metzler indicated, but via family, some family commitments and some garage sales. They're the two that seem to be the ones that have raised the most concerns about safety and, and other activities, you know, in that area.
And they also seem connected to a bunch of people, too, so if there's information that they can.
Are you saying that you want to stop the meeting with these people?
Well, I was, I was thinking that it might be worth having a, having a discussion with those two particular individuals, because they're the ones that seem to be, you know, listing all of the concerns from a safety standpoint and from an event, other events that are going on in the community.
I would say take a look at that, and then, you know, Jim can facilitate, I think probably can't you, getting in touch with them and addressing their concerns, you know, making them aware and smooth it over.
I would be more than happy to speak with them.
Well, I mean, one of them's a parishioner of the church.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that would be a good.
Yes, absolutely.
Goodwill.
Anything's a.
The only other suggestion I would make is, you know, depending, I don't know who you have designated as marshals to stop traffic there.
Rick is a marshal captain. We have about 15 marshals. We disperse throughout the route. Go ahead, Rick.
I would reach out to either the commander, whoever you're working with at A Zone, and just ask them, say, we've got a group of marshals. Is there anything you want us to know? Make sure we do, just so that the sheriffs can give you some tips. You know, it sounds, it sounds easy to stock that kind of running runs, but it can get a little hairy.
Yeah, we're all worried about that, too, by the way.
Just to make sure that everyone's consistent.
We're going to do some training. We're going to kill them with kindness, be as courteous as we can be. So there will be instructions for the marshals. I think we had a little episode last, last race where someone was offensive to one of the cars that were stopped.
Okay.
Okay, so we're mindful of that. We'll do everything we can to minimize the intrusion on the neighborhood.
So the sheriff's deputies might have some suggestions.
Absolutely.
To hand over in that regard.
Right.
And then drivers going through there are getting the same, kind of same.
Absolutely. We will be very mindful of being courteous. Absolutely.
And Vito, you'd indicated that the sheriff is committed from 9:15 to 10?
10 o'clock, right. Right. It's really a relatively small race, but even though it's small, it still has to be addressed, and we totally understand that.
There's a lot of behind the scenes.
Yeah. Within an hour, it's going to be all over within an hour. Done.
By 10:30, a little different than Ms. Grosser and myself participated in the, in the corporate challenge last night with a small group of 10,400 of our closest friends.
Nothing like that.
When you say participated, Tony.
Define that.
That's what he did.
You were sure.
We did the.
Those photos.
We did the whole, we did the whole race.
Those photos of Tony dumping water on his head?
He didn't have to.
I ran.
This guy.
Did you run a walk?
I sprinted.
The only thing that I'd like to just kind of bring up is, I think, I know that you anticipated being able to speak at our previous work session, two weeks ago, but even at that, that's still less than a month away from the actual race, so I would just encourage you for next year, or, you know, Jim, you know, from your position there in the talented, I mean, I think we need to have these coming to us for approval months in advance, and not only come to us, but an approval, but we shouldn't be hashing out routes and marshals, this should all be sort of put together.
Well, thanks to them, they probably could have come months ago, but we had to make so many changes to even get it to a point where it would be reviewable.
Yeah, I would say our first contact was at least two months.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, we've been meeting for several weeks now.
We started almost the first part of March.
They've had major modifications to get to where I even felt comfortable bringing this to you. And again, the whole thing started with the premise that we would not do it at this location this year.
Then it was more of a blanket statement, just moving forward, okay.
Okay, or other questions for Vito or Rick? Okay, Vito, any additional questions or comments for us at this point?
No, I just, I'm going to do exactly what you suggest, in meeting with these two residents, number one and number two, we're going to print a lot more of the letters for the residents, and make sure that we put them on all the residents' homes, as you suggested, so...
With that contact, you know, certainly with that contact information, so that you got that.
Absolutely.
And then Jim, you'll work with Vito and the Knights for the, you know, the actual locations for the coverage.
What exactly do you propose to get these letters out to everybody?
We're going to deliver them on Saturday morning, and we're going to try to talk to as many people as possible, but we will, at a minimum, put them on the flag of their mailbox or in their door.
Well, to be honest now, I have a hundred and fifty of those letters, the way we printed them is back to back like this, here's what they look like, like that, see, back to back?
Sure.
And I have a hundred and fifty of them right now in my car. I only anticipated just Cobble's and Gobhart and...
Wedgewood.
Wedgewood and Highland Drive, which would be enough, a hundred and fifty.
Yes.
But now that we have to address the remaining streets, I'll have to print those Monday at the church, but we don't, we're not charged for the, the church will print these for free.
Sure.
So Monday morning, I will go through the parish, you know, office, and have three, four hundred more printed, and then we'll just...
Yeah, and I'm not... Yeah, I was, well, I was, also what I was thinking is, is that, let's, Jim, if you, if you provide the information, let's find out, because I'm not in favor of killing too many trees with copies either. Let's identify what we've got, you know, for those, and then let's see what, see what we can, you know, do by way of prioritizing, because I would, I would think that, you know, certainly Cobble's and Gobhart, and Parkwood and Wedgewood are the primary ones, because they're the ones that use that to get in and to get out.
I just, I just a quick count, it's about a hundred and twenty-eight people that we're looking to notify.
Yeah.
So you might be okay.
Okay, I have a hundred and fifty.
You may need all of those before you're done, but I'm looking at all of the hot spots, really, where they need to know, and I just counted out a hundred and twenty-eight.
All right, you let me know exactly where you want us to, we'll have you there by Saturday morning.
I will provide this with you, it's, everything's been shaded, okay?
Okay.
If you, if you need a list of those street numbers, I can provide that for you quickly, but that is where we need to notify definitely.
The shaded area.
Could you get, could you get those to Vito tomorrow?
Yes, I believe I could.
So if you could, if he could get that, then we minimize any guessing about shade, no shade. If we get those, if we get those to Vito, then he can take that list and then start checking off for Saturday for those, for those specific homes most impacted.
Absolutely.
Because I think that's really the key, Cobble's, Gobhart, Parkwood, Wedgewood, and then the Five Mile Line Road, and then the High School Drive, I mean, those are the, those are the key, key ones, because they'll be impacted either trying to get out or trying to get in overall.
And all Cobble's.
And I think it's great that you're putting this on the back, I was going to suggest, is there a way to have residents be involved, because certainly if there's a run-through, you'll have fewer problems if you've got neighbors running.
That's, that's where they're going to be distributed, just back to, back to front like that, so they'll know it's a race, and then they'll know what we're going to do, and not, you know, we're not going to close any rows, and just general information to make sure that they're satisfied with how the Knights are conducting this race, that's very important. And we care about them, and we care about their concerns, that's the important thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because in the letter, I said that this is your neighborhood, these are your streets.
Right.
And we're mindful of that, and we respect that, so we're trying to be very courteous.
Yes.
And if the county gets any complaints, we want to know about that, we will follow up.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think what I'm, what I'm seeing from a difference this year, as you're heading in, as compared to last year, the fact that you're putting those sheets together with your contact information.
Right.
And you're hitting, you're hitting those doors, trying to talk to as many people individually as you can, you know, leave it, leave it on their, on their door, between their doors, so that they've got it, because I think that's really the key. I think the biggest problem that I saw and fed back last year was just the lack of information.
Right.
When was it going to be?
Right.
It kind of didn't get out, people had different plans and things, and knowing ahead of time, folks can plan their day, like, I can be out of here, I'll be out of the neighborhood by eight thirty, nine o'clock, I'll do all my errands, by the time I get back, ten thirty, eleven o'clock, you know, for the most part, the race is done, or I wait until after eleven o'clock to do my errands, so I think those, those types of things really help.
We'll make sure that there will be no waves made from this race.
All right.
With the residents, we don't, we don't want any problems.
Anytime you're dealing with people, you can count on you and expect it, but we'll address whatever comes up.
Right, excellent.
Absolutely.
And Jim, you'll, you'll, you've got, obviously you've got Vito's card, and you can just stay in touch with Vito to get that information.
I'll be with you sometime tomorrow.
You'll be ready.
You call me now.
I'll email it to you.
Email it to me? Okay, great.
That's even, even better.
And I'll make sure it's all taken care of. And Rick and I would like to thank the board for having us come to you and inform you about this race and what we're doing, we really appreciate your approval. I'm mindful of the fact that we are doing this for charity, doing God's work, and that's what the Knights of Columbus are all about.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rick, thank you very much.
Jim, for all the help he gave us.
Yeah, Jim, thank you so much, you've been real gentleman.
Is that done yet?
You see, it's in the right direction.
Yeah, but I see the everything.
All right, Vito, Rick, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Hope for good weather.
Yeah, I hope so.
And we're hoping for good weather, that's right.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Bye-bye now.
All right, take care. All right, I don't see Mr. Tett here, so this is strike number two. This will be officially removed from the agenda. It appears as though his interest to present to the board about some upgrades in some language and some increase in fees isn't necessarily that important, and therefore it'll be removed from the agenda. What I'm going to do next is I'm going to take out of order, because we do have a couple of, a couple of individuals here, so I'm going to skip the garage edition, and I'm going to move right to twelve twenty-three Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Mr. Newfeld, and Mr. Newfeld, if you'd like to join us here, and Mr. Costello, if you'd like to just do a quick synopsis of what's taken place since the last time that we were physically here together.
I would be happy to, thank you. We had met with Rudy back in October twenty-second of two thousand and fourteen, where he made his initial proposal to the board, the weather got a little bad after that, and we didn't get a chance to go out and see. Most recently, Tony and I did go to walk the site, we did that on last Friday?
We did that last, we did that last Friday.
And we were lucky enough to bump into a couple neighbors along Abington, who'd been there since day one, and they were aware of Rudy's proposal, they seemed to be somewhat supportive of it, recognizing that they're looking to keep a buffer between their property and the potential development. We did get an opportunity with Rudy to drive around and look at all three sides of the, of the project. The project is much more buffered than I thought it was initially, I had some initial concerns that related to Thistleberry and that area over there, but it's pretty well buffered. There is a concern for one of the two houses, it's on the west side of the project, where the cul-de-sac would have been, or the T-turnaround, but it is fairly well buffered. We have not really talked a little bit about what the actual incentive would be yet, if that were to be offered. I know this board is more supportive of public works improvements, rather than, you know, fundings that occur, target the incentive zoning, we haven't had a chance to talk about that yet, as to what would be a viable incentive, but looking at the project and discussing the matter with some of the neighbors that were out there, it looks like it may warrant consideration for at least a sketch plan review to get the people in to talk. Tony and I did talk to Rudy about the idea of meeting with the neighbors, if they were to come for a sketch plan, so they knew ahead of time what his intent was, he agreed to do that, recognizing that it may or may not move forward after this sketch plan review, but it does, it does seem to be logical to have a sketch plan review for the project.
And we did, Rudy did hand, hand this up, which I gave to all the members of the board, with the exception of Rob, because he was, he was not at the last meeting, so I just gave, gave that to him. Rudy, I don't know if you want to take just thirty seconds to go down through this, I know you may not have it with you, you can share my copy, as long as you promise to get it back.
No, I, I got the facts and figures pretty much in my head. We did, we did go through that, and I wanted to mention, when we did that, we're not ignoring or totally shelving the fact that what the current zoning is, but we looked at the current zoning and said, okay, when did that, talking to staff, when did that come into place? Well, it was early seventy-two or three, there was no sewers, it was basically farm community, so we're not ignoring it, but we said, okay, let's take that from seventy-three and put it aside, and we took what's current today, I took the zoning that I did at Cranberry, and you'll see the numbers of how many it would yield, we did the zoning on what Abington currently has and what that would yield, and then we took the master plan, and the master plan said two to four acres for that area, so we broke it down, what would it look like at two units, three units, or the four units, and we averaged all those things together, and I think it was twenty point five or twenty-one, I can't remember.
Twenty point one.
Twenty point one. So we thought, looking at what's there, it made sense to us. We haven't done a full neighborhood information session yet, I wanted to get the feeling from the board first, but our neighbors all in Abington know about it, as soon as we get a good feeling here, we'll have a session there at the model, which, I know you people are busy, I don't know how you do what you do, but you're welcome to come to that, we'll have all of our neighbors there, we'll have a basic little draft of what's going on, the sketch plan, answer their questions, concerns, let them know what our intentions for the buffer are, which are real important to us and everyone we've talked to so far. We've also done a simple sketch of what it would look like with thirteen patios, so either you're going to have twelve buildings, granted there are two units per building, or thirteen patios, well, we lose with the patios, and we told our neighbors that even with a patio project, we would try to keep as much buffering as we could, but we could make no guarantees to anyone, because if someone didn't want them, they could take them away, and there's a bigger footprint with a patio, so we, we leave less there, and the site, I'm glad you came to look at it, and I'm welcome to walk it again if you'd like, it really is a pretty little spot, and every, every piece of vegetation we can keep. From where we looked at it, of course, in the winter, it's different, you see through more, but whether it's patios or townhomes, you can't see, you will not be able to, from the perimeter, see that there's even buildings in there in the vegetated time, so...
It's quite visible even from the road, you see how tucked back.
It'll be back from, yeah, it'll be back from the road, about two hundred and fifty feet, we had, I won't bore you, I know you've got a lot of things to do, but the capstone project for RIT, Mr. Chatfield lives in our community, and he gave his students, each year he gives the graduating class a real project, so we gave them this to play with, I spoke with Mark, hello, sir.
Hi.
And it was quite interesting what these, I mean, their technology, so they had a PowerPoint thing, and they had graphics in three D, and I was quite impressed, so you look down the road, and I'm looking at the graphic of the thing, and I said, man, that, that looks like an authentic woods. He said, oh no, that is the woods that's there, that's the buffer, that's Laskin was the, because I know the trees in that property, so it's, it's quite, quite a presentation, and when we're ready, I'll have that for the neighbors, and I'll have that ready for the board too.
Well, I, I certainly, I would support going forward with looking at a sketch plan, I appreciate the additional information, but I'll reiterate that I was confident early on with what you were presenting, especially given the fact that when we look at what's, how it's zoned now, in terms of the conventional plan, you're not going to get that buffer, you're not going to satisfy the neighboring residents, so I would support going forward.
How many lots are we looking at, are we looking at the three or the four? Have we determined?
I think, I think Rudy has said there's a couple options, a couple possibilities.
Yeah, we originally had it at a four, and then we wanted to turn around, and then we decided to double it for fire marshal, and we agreed, so now with the T-turnaround, I think the map you have in front of you is twenty-two, so it's three point, I don't remember the numbers on it.
So you're looking to present at an informational session for the neighbors, a couple variations on what is possible.
We'll show them what thirteen patios would look like, and we're not presenting that, you pick the patios, we're going to take all the trees, we still would do everything we could, but it just won't give us the latitude, and the way the stormwater management's designed, it's going to be quite beautiful, we're pretty excited.
And Rudy, these are owned, owned, not rented?
Yes, no, these will be owned, these will be owned, yeah.
Rudy, I just, I just want to thank you for this, because, you know, in a roundabout fashion, maybe two or three months ago, when you first came in, this was sort of what I wanted to see, at least, you know, broken down, and, you know, this is very concise how it's laid out, so, like Paula said, I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward to the next step, but, you know, this definitely helps clarify for me what, what is there, and what the plan is to kind of, you know, fill that space.
The logic, the logic.
And we didn't, again, I always wanted, we didn't dismiss current zoning or ignore it, it's just, that's the snapshot of what we have today, and what's going to happen as your master plan starts to come into, into play.
Thank you.
Right, and I supported it from the beginning, I thought it was a good...
It's going to be beautiful.
It fills a need to, I think the one thing we have to talk about, well, maybe not right now, but maybe, you know, offline, to get something together about what the incentive would be.
That's right, yeah, we should do that before the sketch plan review occurs.
Sure.
Very good.
Well, thank you again for your time.
Any, any other questions for Rudy at this point?
Just one before Rudy leaves, is everything raining properly?
Yeah, it's great.
Rudy can go now.
The only complaint I have, the only complaint I have is the, the hand raking job was a little shaky on the part of the town.
Well, I had to consider it, we found a rake.
Yeah, I wanted, I took a picture, I should have forwarded, here's Mr. Costello, hand raking and seeding the lawn with my crew.
I wanted to make sure it was done properly.
That was the first.
This is Day of Caring.
That was the first.
Part of the Day of Caring, it's thirty-four years, and the first time he's had a rake in his hands.
I took a picture for you.
Tony, Tony, Tony.
Thank you.
Next time I'll be in a kilt, forget the show.
All right, very good, thank you, board, no other questions?
Thank you very much.
Staff, no other questions?
Thank you, guys.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, we'll next move to public works, and we'll talk about the catch basin bid results. We have Rose and Rick here with us this evening, so you are up, and I think the board has received some information via email on this, and my guess is, is that knowing Rick, he's got a copy or two, in case you need it.
Thanks.
I've got mine, Rick, thanks. Always, always prepared, always prepared. Okay, so I guess I'll take just maybe thirty seconds, then I'll turn it over to you folks. As you recall, last year was the first time that we went out for bids for catch basin work, we elected to go out to do that, to see what the prices were that came back, and get a sense of how that might fit in. We were hearing at the time from Ronnie that we probably had something in the neighborhood of a hundred plus catch basins that were in need of repair, just because of age, some of the technology back thirty years ago, more what I'll call block or brick versus precast, and so DVW had been chasing around, trying to shore up where we could, cone up where we had to, and I think last year, we ended up doing approximately thirty-two or thirty-four?
Thirty-four, I think.
Thirty-four?
Yeah.
And so we, we asked DVW to go out for quotes again for this year, for consideration to again sub that out, and then, you know, so Rick did that, he's got the results, and we can talk about not only how things went last year, what changed by way of costs, and any recommendations that you might have, so Rick, Rose?
And Rick, if you want to explain your strategy?
Sure, I can do that. So the first page just reflects the people that initially were going to submit bids, we ended up actually getting bids from AP Property Services, he was the bid winner of last year, Ironwood Heavy Highway, which is a division of Terry Tree, and then CP Ward and Villager, and you'll note that AP was low bid for the total of thirty basins, their price was forty thousand five hundred dollars, or thirteen hundred and fifty per basin. If you look on the bottom, you'll also note that Sean's price last year was nine fifty per basin, it went up four hundred dollars this year. I think the reason it did that was he got more experience in what it really takes to take them out and replace them, and possibly didn't make a whole lot of money on the ones that he did for us last year, so his price did come up. Ironwood's price went down considerably from where they were last year, they dropped from two thousand thirty-five down to fourteen twenty, so they were very, very close. So they were very, very close on that one, and that reflects that there are other suppliers out there in the community that are looking to get some of this work, so. So they were, AP Property Services was the low bid. If we choose to do the 30, they were low bid for all of their hourly rates, except for their six-wheel dump truck, which Ironwood was high on. We use those hourly rates. Occasionally, what we find is we'll have a catch basin on one side of the street, catch basin on the other side of the street. The pipe that connects them has gone bad, it's collapsed. So while they're there, we'll have them excavate back, resupply them with a new pipe, and they sleeve right through it. And that's where those hourly rates come in, is to do that additional work when needed. I then took and tried to come up with, on the next page, it shows what I felt the cost was for us to do them internally. So I took an average rate for one of our senior MEOs of $25 an hour. I applied a benefit rate of 50%, which gets you up to the 37.50, and then 10 hours for that person to do the rip out, the new installation, and then the restoration of all that. And we went down through and did that for each of the operators and the equipment associated with it. And so when you get to the bottom line, what you see, our cost is utilizing our equipment with our labors is roughly $2,147. The note you'll see down below, the key piece of equipment that we would use on those is our backhoe. We had two backhoes going into the spring auction. Our Komatsu was in worse shape than our current case unit, so that went to auction. We kept the case, but that's a year 2000, that's got a lot of hours on it. And to say we were going to go out there and utilize that on an everyday basis doing this, we didn't think that was going to work out. Note number two, our current labor force is still expanding their equipment operating skills, so the production may be less than the one basin per day. That one basin per day was based utilizing, actually, Bob Moore was one of the guys that was the laborer on the job, and one of our really high-skilled operators back in the day. And some of the guys we have today aren't quite up to their speed yet with the equipment and with their skills. We're building a training program to increase everybody's abilities. Note number three, the 30 basins we are attempting to outsource are approximately a third of the total that need work within the town. So we're putting a dent in it, but there's still a backlog as we're going out and sweeping the streets and cleaning catch basins, we're finding more and more that have started the process of collapsing in. So our list continues to grow. In 2014, with the contract replaced, 34. With our team, we were able to get in and only do four. The other item that we discussed is with our current workforce, typically from November till end of March, we pretty much tell the guys no vacation. They've got to be here for snow. So their prime vacation time is the summer months when we would be working on the catch basins. So again, that makes it difficult for us with our trained people to really keep a cohesive team of guys focused on that one job with the rest of the work that we have going on. So I think Rose would agree, our recommendation would be to enter into another contract with AP Enterprises and do another 30 basins.
Rick, were we satisfied with AP?
Yeah, they did, the first batch that we gave them, they did very, very well. We gave them a batch late in the season that we had some issues with on some of the asphalt work and some settling. Sean's gone back and made those repairs. So, yeah, I think they did a good job for us.
And then additional repairs are not any additional cost?
Correct. Yeah, that, yeah, that was all, yep.
That answered my question. I was going to ask if there was any concerns or complaints from last season.
No.
So what happened is that as we got towards the end of the season, Ronnie and Rick, you know, came to me to say that they had underrun an area, and they had some additional money. We had a handful of other basins that were pretty bad and didn't want to leave over the winter months. So they finished those up, and I think what we kind of got grabbed on was we were pushing the weather from the asphalt piece.
Yeah, it was cold.
So if we went back.
When you're going out with a small truck and you're doing small areas, the material cools off so quick on you, you don't get a real good quality job, and Sean was aware of that, so.
So, I mean, to their credit, they stepped up and made that right for those handful that we did at the end of the season, which is, I think, what we would have expected. But certainly, you know, to their credit, they also stepped up, and there wasn't a lot of discussion or debate. They were very proactive.
I think it's encouraging to be consistent. Obviously, they have the communication now, they know where we're at. And I would also add that although AP Enterprises is based out of Ontario, the Fico family is a longtime Penfield family, so they certainly know where the catch basins are.
Yes, yep.
Having grown up here in Penfield, so I'm always encouraged when we have a little bidder coming in that's proved themselves, and they also are a Penfield.
Sean has been great to work with. I mean, you call him anytime, day or night, he answers the phone and does what you need to get done.
Tony, looking forward, it looks as if last year was year one of trying to get down the backlog, and we did about 38. This year, we'll do 30, maybe a few more.
Maybe a few more, depending upon.
So I would assume that next year will sort of be year three of that backlog, and then are we going to be on more of a routine maintenance cycle at that point?
Well, I think, you know, it's kind of interesting, because Rick and I spent a few minutes this morning chatting. I kind of caught him when he was here at the town hall for PRC. And one of the things that we briefly talked about was trying to get ourselves back to a normal position, and then be more in what I would call the normal, you know, routine of things. So like today, for instance, or actually tomorrow, we'll start our oil and stone. And what we do is, you know, over a period of years, we take a segment of our town roads, and we do the oil and stone for the preventative maintenance and making sure they last. You know, I want to make sure we do the same thing for our catch basins, get ourselves back to normal or where we are in pretty much good stead. So instead of having a backlog of 90 or 100 of these, and DPW getting a call, myself getting a call, that then as we go out to do our spring work, our sweep, our normal sweeping and things, that we identify those onesies, twosies that come up, and we get more into a normal routine and not big blocks like we're going to see for these next, you know, last year, this year, and probably next year. It'll probably take us at least through next year to get back to being close to the schedule again.
Very good.
So if the board's comfortable, we'll do a town board resolution by noon Friday, authorizing us to sign a contract with the low bidder of AP Services Enterprises. Okay. The only other thing I would note on this is that certainly you took the conservative approach, Rick, as you were going through with a 1.5 multiplier for benefits, because, I mean, from a county standpoint and back for actuals, I think we're closer to the 1.7.
Yeah, but I didn't want to look like I was trying to fudge the number. Make it look consistently high.
I understand.
A little conservative side.
We appreciate that.
I understand that and appreciate it, but, you know, thank you for that. Okay. Anything else for Rick or Rose? Okay, and then I'll just make one last comment. Oil and Stone starts tomorrow, and we've put out, we've cranked out a lot of letters to all those areas that are going to get it. This will be our third year that we've done the letters, and certainly that's helped keep the calls, not eliminate them, but it's helped keep the calls down, so.
And both of our letters were delivered today.
In case you get any calls. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rose. Appreciate it. Have a great evening. All right, we're going to move back to action items under law and finance, and specifically item number two, garage addition 2041 Penfield Road. And Cos, you want to tee that one up?
Thank you, Tony. We had had a public hearing for the special permit for the garage addition on March 4th. After that period of time, the board tabled the matter pending the planning board having a meeting regarding the site plan review process. We tabled the matter until they had a chance to vet through the entire project. They did that. They passed a resolution subject to obtaining the special permit on May 14th. In the resolution, there's nothing outstanding. It's pretty much boilerplate material. I think that part of it's fine. The only thing I bring to the board's attention is the fact that, as you may or may not know, there's still a very large pile of topsoil in the back of the property adjacent to the residences at Willow Pond. I think it's important that they, and they have been attempting to start moving the material out. I think it's important that material get off that site as quickly as possible to give them back their errands and their views. Other than that, that would be the only outstanding issue that I would see with respect to the application.
Okay. Sounds good.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
All right, you'll get that in for Friday, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. That brings us down to informational items, and got a status update for those that are interested in brewing and distillery.
We'd had a discussion with Tim Stevens several months ago about the idea of going to Mark's old church across the street from Mark's Good Soria. The board, I think, was somewhat supportive of going through a public hearing process. Shortly after we had met with them, Mark went back, looked at the church, and actually went to several distillery operations around the Northeast, and determined that the church floor would not support the materials and hardware necessary to operate that kind of a business. So as a result, it kind of went dormant, and they kind of walked away. Mark liked the idea of doing it still, so he decided that he was going to invest the money to support the floor and also do something in the basement to make the basement more usable, subject to our approval, of course. So they've come back, they're interested in moving forward, they have made an application, holding the application, obviously, until we talk about this. But the intent would be to submit a resolution for a public hearing on July 1st for that purpose. If that's okay with you.
Sounds good.
Yep. We'll do that.
Rejuvenate the discussion?
Yeah, and discussions with Mark. Mark will be there, he will be a partner. His intent is to preserve all the stained glass windows and do new improvements to the exterior of the building to bring it back to what it was, so.
And he'll go back to the historic preservation board as well?
Yes, he will.
Okay.
And the historic preservation board will have to go on the tour of the distilleries throughout the Northeast.
Yes, they will. At least a five-mile-wide route.
The expensive budget for the historic preservation.
All right. Anything else on that item? All right. That brings us to the end of the agenda, and see no further business before the board. This meeting of the 27th is officially adjourned at 8:03.